Item 9C, consideration discussion of possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution Number 958, a resolution approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2016/2017 amended manual of fees establishing fees and cost charges in City of Broken Arrow. Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. Because of the importance of this matter, I would appreciate the opportunity to read a statement, express some comments regarding the matter that's before you. I did take the liberty of passing out to you the statement that I'm going to be reading this evening, so if I could, Mayor, I'd like to read that. Tonight, the city council has before its consideration legislation approving new usage rates for our water, sewer, and stormwater utilities that would be outlined in the manual of fees if it's approved. Because it is our responsibility to provide our customers with safe, reliable, competitively priced water, sewer, and stormwater services, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to update the governing body and community and provide comments on the need and justification for the proposed rate increase. After I complete my comments, I'm going to ask the Assistant City Manager of Operations to come forward and provide the council members and the public with a brief slide presentation on the operational capital needs and the impact of the proposed rate increase on our customers and a comparison to one of our neighboring communities. Essentially, this will be the same information that was discussed last month as well as some that was discussed in September. I'd like to begin by detailing what I call our infrastructure holdings. More specifically, the City of Broken Arrow's utility infrastructure includes the following: A water production plant, which we know is worth over $60 million. Two wastewater treatment facilities, our Lynn Lane Plant and then our partnership in the RMUA. Six water storage facilities. Twenty-nine sewer lift stations. Four booster pump stations. And nearly 1,500 miles of both water and sanitary sewer lines. The city is also responsible for managing stormwater conveyance systems throughout the community to transport stormwater to their natural drainage ways or courses. The proposed increase in our rates are projected to collect sufficient revenue for three things. First, maintain the operations of each of our utilities for the next five years. Second, a major portion of the proposed increase will generate sufficient revenue for debt service payments for the proposed capital projects which have been presented to the city council. And third, the implementation of a multi-year initiative to keep the authority in a sustainable financial position by developing a reserve policy that ensures we have sufficient revenues for unforeseen circumstances. Earlier this year, the staff completed the multi-year process of reviewing and quantifying the day-to-day financial operational needs and the five-to-seven-year capital improvement program for our utility department. This was something that the city council directed be done, and I'm pleased to share with you a couple of months ago that we completed it. As a part of this process, the city council approved the hiring of a consulting engineering firm of Black and Beach, which specializes in helping municipalities analyze costs for services delivered and establish the appropriate utility rates. City staff working with Black and Beach has determined what Broken Arrow's water, sewer, and stormwater rates/fees should be in order to pay for the necessary utility system improvements and the additional staff needed to maintain these systems. Through a very detailed review, the administration identified the need for a major capital reinvestment over the next seven years in the department's systems. More specifically, a total of $140 million worth of improvements were identified, which include $26 million for improvements to our water system, $102 million to improve our wastewater sanitary sewer system, and $12 million to improve our stormwater systems. As you all are very well aware, most of our systems were built in the '60s, '70s, and '80s respectively. Much of this early expansion of our system is either experiencing or showing definite signs of aging and a need for replacement. The city has experienced explosive growth over the last 30 years and a significant capital investment is needed in order to make our utility systems reliable, efficient for current customers, and to ensure we have the capacity to accommodate the future growth anticipated in our community over the next 10 years. In addition, technologies have advanced significantly, I should say, and as a result, regulations have become more stringent over the years to the point that some of our equipment and facilities require substantial improvements to continue to meet these regulations. Based on my assessment, the proposed improvements need to be implemented in an aggressive manner in order for our community not to fall behind the proverbial curve any further. Respectfully, it is my recommendation that we move forward now; otherwise, the cost to complete the project is only going to increase, and we will continue to have costly repairs to our system like the one that we had on County Ly Road this past spring. Moreover, we could find our system out of compliance with the EPA or the DEQ. Again, we must have the ability to provide high-quality services to both our customers currently and in the future; otherwise, it could really curtail the growth within our community. The proposed rate model calls for the city to pay for the next seven years of operations and $90 million of the $140 million needed in capital funds for the utility system improvements through the utility rates charged to customers. To keep our utility rates affordable and stable, city officials will consider asking voters to approve general obligation bonds in late 2017 or in early 2018 to generate the remaining $50 million needed to complete the capital improvement program. Please allow me to restate that completing the projects is really not optional. The condition of the facilities and the potential to be out of compliance makes these improvements absolutely necessary. The option of the general bond obligation that would be under consideration definitely has financial advantages for customers and property owners versus increasing the utility rates at this time. Now, with regard to the proposed rates, under the proposed plan before you, a typical residential customer uses about 7,000 gallons of water and 5,000 gallons of sewer per month. Under the current rates proposed, their water bill will increase around $3.36 per month. Their sewer bill will increase approximately $2.75 per month, and their stormwater fee should be an increase of about 75 cents per equivalent service unit, as it's called. The plan calls for a rate increase once a year for the next five years to ensure we have sufficient revenues to pay for operations and the debt service that we will incur. Please note that the good news is, based upon the current revenue projections, the expected rate increases in subsequent years should be less than in previous years. In closing, nobody likes any type of rate increase, myself included, but one of the basic things that our city is obligated to do is to get right what I call the adequate provision of revenues for all of our utilities. I believe that what is before you are charges, although they are an increase, are reasonable requests from the administration that will basically take care of our system, both operations and capital improvement-wise. Even though it's not a popular thing to do, the rate increase is absolutely necessary and proved a thing to ensure we continue to provide reliable, efficient, and affordable utility services. I would like to point out that we have undertaken an aggressive transparency campaign to make sure that all of our citizens and customers understand where we are at, and we will continue to do so. Our customers can view the complete capital improvement plan at our website, which is They can also view a video showing some of the problems, and there's also a question-and-answer video which they can look at at www.brokenarrowok.gov/waterbill. And we will be taking the comments from tonight as well as the presentation and including on our website just as another tool to help our customers understand exactly where we are. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Swab to come forward and update the council and go through the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, Mayor, council members. Kenneth Swab, the Assistant City Manager over Operations. I've been asked to be brief, and I'll just let you know that brevity is not my strong point, but I'll do everything I can. In all seriousness, Mr. Spurgeon actually laid it out extremely well in the introduction. There are several things that go into making up that utility rate, and he laid it out just item after item, but one of the biggest issues are the capital improvements. As we go in and have to either repair, extend, maintain, replace some of the system with capital improvements due to demand, due to aging, due to the emerging technologies that he's talked about, all of those things come together, and that capital improvement program has to address that. When we met in September, we had still about $140 million proposed over the five-year period. One of the biggest issues that was affecting the proposed rate increase in September was how level was our five-year plan. At that time, the first two years, which would be FY '17 and FY '18, were quite high. They were approaching $40 million. So staff, the Utilities Department, Engineering, Construction, along with Finance, and the City Manager's Office all came back together and said, "We've got to pull the first couple of years down and then increase Year Three, which will be 2019, Year Four, which is 2020." Try to pull those up, level that off, because that had a big impact on what we were looking at, the utilities. This is what we concluded on the five-year plan. As you can see, it is pretty level. The average of those five years is $27,500,000 a year. So the first one's 28.2, then the second year is 30.3, then the third year is just under 29, then we drop off in Year Four or Five just a little bit below that average. This really helped create those different scenarios that we looked at in November. What makes up that capital improvement? What makes up that $140 million over five years? I've got two slides. I'm not going to read each one of them to you, but I'm going to point out some of the big-ticket items. And mind you, that the two slides I'm going to show, this is just the first two years. So this isn't even the $140 million. This is just those first two years. At the water plant, which is the brand-new, the plant that we just brought online in April of 2014, we've got a few items that we still need to do to the plant to make it more efficient, to help us out as we go through that process. First one is the sludge. As we go through that filtration, that membrane, it creates a lot of--sludge is a technical term for the waste that we're taking out of the Vertigree River. All of those particles, those suspended particles in that river, the fancy term dirt, turbidity, we're taking that out. It goes to the lagoon as we clean those membranes daily. They fill up pretty quick. We've got to get a sludge removal program in so we can take that sludge off-site and then begin to use the capacity of the lagoons again. Second item, the sulfur sulfate feed addition, is really to address algae issues. That's what really basically helps you mitigate and remediate that algae so that your plate -- or not your plate settlers, but actually your membranes can function more efficiently. I think we noticed that in our first year of operating it, that we really had to do something with the algae. Third one is the plate settlers. As we have now two and a half years of operating the plant and working with HDR continuously, we've determined that if we expand the plate settlers, we can actually be more efficient and actually increase the capacity. So we have a ticket item in that capital improvement program to do that. We can actually expand the capacity from 20 million gallons a day, which has been challenging for us to meet, to get up to 30 million gallons a day, which will now gives us that extra capacity that we think we're going to need. I'd like to point out the last one, the UWA, the Grand River Line. What are we going to do with that line? That is still open for some discussion that we'll address in Bama today, at least bring you up to update on that. So we have a placeholder, about $2 million, at the plant to determine whether we bring raw water in or treated water. Now, the master connections, you'll see primary and the secondary. Both of those are online, but we actually need to make a few little modifications so that we can operate them from the plant. Today, the plant operators will have to drive into town and turn them on and open them up if we need them. We want to make them more effective and efficient that we can actually just operate them from the plant. To do the secondary, that's the one that we brought online this past summer in 107 days, record time to get there. If we had a control device on it, we wouldn't have had it on in time, so we want to go ahead. We made it manual for right now. Then the third item is that UWA line. This is actually the line from prior to Broken Arrow, some improvements in there, and I believe we have six or seven million dollars. So total for the UWA line, we're just under $10 million with the plant and the line itself. Last two items are the last two categories, the distribution system itself. Just kind of point out a couple of the items there, the 24-inch transmission line, the south loop, and the 16-inch transmission line, south loop. Over a decade ago, we, a long-term study, decided we needed a loop around the town to be more effective, more efficient, and more growth. We've got a lot of portions of the 24-inch in, actually have some of the 16. We still have along Olive, 129th, going north from Tucson, 121st, that's a 16-inch. We still have some 24 along Lynn Lane, and then Florence or 111th. So that's included. Then the last group is a water storage system. Got to maintain the storage system. Even probably more important now that we've gone to chloramines. Not maintaining the still tanks on the inside can create some problems with your disinfectant residual. So we need to make some modifications, have better mixing and turnover and that. Probably the first item that I want to point out is the 2 million gallon-plus storage tank that would be located in the south or southeast part of town, and we're working on that now, but we need the construction monies. Let's take a look at wastewater real quick. Lot more projects in the first two years, first two years, not the full five-year plan. First category up is the Hakey Creek. As Mr. Spurgeon said, this is the plant that we share with TMUA Tulsa. It's the RMUA. Lot of improvements still going on there. Plant built in 1971, '72. Lot of improvements throughout, but we still have several. Headworks probably right now is one of the more important ones. There are certain days you actually cannot enter into the headworks because of the odors are too strong. You'd actually have to have a breathing mask on it right now. We've got to address that. That's still, I believe, the original construction on the headworks. The basin itself, the next group down, is just one item, and it's really just the trunk sewer. We've got a 54-inch that goes into the Hakey Creek Park down south part of town, and then we pump to the plant from that location. That trunk sewer goes from 54 to 48, and then as you keep coming north, will go to 36 and 24. It's part of the -- part of it, the original, well, I don't want to say the original, the plant that was down in the south part of town, down by the end of our elementary school, the outfall actually ties into this side and goes down to that plant. That line is aging and needs some repair, so we've got a phased construction over the five-year. You see Phase One identified. Last two items are the Lynn Lane. The first one's the plant, and then the second category below is the basin itself. Plant, we're already working on some designs to take care of the headworks and the degritter. Removal system, that's under design. Intend to, actually, we passed a resolution to go for some OWRB loan money, and the construction money is in there. This also addresses the odor control issues that we're having down at the plant. Building a new headworks and degritter facility, locating it further away from the northern boundary of the plant. That construction should be underway later this summer, in 2017. Let's see, probably going to the trunk sewer itself, obviously the County Line trunk sewer, that's a big project under design right now, and we want to go into construction. We're looking at from the plant to Washington, 91st Street, probably in excess of $20 million to replace that. That's a 1982 line. Obviously, you've got the Lynn Lane trunk sewer as well that was actually built in 1968 to run down to the plant. And then Elm trunk sewer. So you see a lot of the trunk sewers, and then in this category, you'll see some lift stations as well. Probably the biggest lift station underway right now is 209th Lift Station and Force Main Improvements. That actually needs some improvement with the lift station itself and the force main to take on the new school that's going in this August. It'll be opening up. This is also on the loan money. This will go to construction very soon, probably in January or no later than February. All right, last two slides that we want to talk about is our rates in general. If you look at the top one, it's water, and then the green one below is sewer. The highlighted ones are the most important. In 2016, that's our current, you'll see the second column. First column is a year, second column is a base rate. That base rate is that meter that we charge a monthly charge for, a service charge, as does our neighboring communities. Our base rate currently for the water is 770, and our current service charge per thousand gallons is $4. Under this proposal that were, as shown in the manual of fees, we would go to an 8.40, a 70 cent increase on the base rate, and then we would go to 4.38, so 38 cents per thousand gallons. That's for your water. Now, if you'll jump down to the sewer, the green one, you'll see the 2016, 7.50 is the base rate on the sewer, and 2.67 is our service per thousand. And then what we're proposing, and as shown in the manual of fees, is an 8.20, which is another 70 cent increase, and then going to 3.08 per thousand gallons. This is the five-year plan that we're looking at. It's a bigger increase, and you can see kind of off to the side, I've got the incremental cost and percent increase, and then the cumulative cost and percent increase. If you'll remember, in our rate studies, we talked revenue. This here is really what the customer feels on their bill. This is the percent increase. So if you look at the incremental percent in the water, that 38 cents per thousand is a 9.5, and then in the following years, it begins to drop back down, 5.7, 5.6, 5.3, to just under 5. That's what's proposed. And then the sewer, the same thing. That first year, actually a 15.4, and then it drops dramatically, and then the following year, down to 8.1, and then down as you go down. So what does that mean on your bill? We've compared it to the City of Tulsa. Tulsa's a good comparison for us largely because most of our surrounding communities in this metropolitan area buy water from Tulsa solely. Bigsby, Jinks, Glenpool, Owasso, Catusa, all buy water, Sperry, all buy water directly from Tulsa. So whatever Tulsa's water rate is, for them to create enough money in their bill to handle the operating and the maintenance, they've got to increase Tulsa's rates some. So we've itemized the service charges. Your first category is water, your second category is sewer, and then I'll touch on the other four. Water service, for a average customer on water, 7,000 gallons, that's basically three people in a home, that is average usage. They can water in the summer, but usually it drops way down in the winter. And then if the sewer is based on 5,000. How we base our sewer is pretty much typical in other communities, that we base your three-month average in your winter. So really, it's a December, January, February, I believe, that we base that on. So it's about 5,000 gallons for an average home, okay? So if we take a look at the water, 7,000, our base rate, you see the, well, you see the usage charge of 4.38, and then you see the base rate at 8.40. You run that out, our charges for 7,000 gallons of water would be $39.06 compared to the same 7,000 for a Tulsa customer, they'd be 33.02. So we're actually $6.04 higher on water. Not the same when you go to the sewer. When you take a look at our sewer at 5,000, you've got our usage at 3.08, you've got your base rate at 8.20, so when you extend those charges out, we're going to total at 23.60 for sanitary sewer, wastewater. Where Tulsa's at 39.38, so they're $15.78 higher. So there's almost a net $9 to $10 difference right there, almost $10 difference, where we're almost $10 below on our water and our sewer. Now, just the last few items, our stormwater is still less than Tulsa by 68 cents per equivalent service unit, and our service units are very similar. Refuge or trash, we're higher by $1.58. We pick up twice a week. They pick up once, but they do have recycling, so, you know, we're slightly higher. Life ride EMS is the same, and then Tulsa does not have a street light fee, and we dropped ours several years ago back to one. Bottom line is, we're at 90.38 for an average 7,000 and 5,000, where Tulsa would be at 98.22, a difference of just under $8, about 7.84. I also ran just a couple of other scenarios just to see how this compares. Okay, that's great for your average. What happens in the summer if you're watering quite a bit and your bill now is, say, 12,000? How does that compare? We're still lower than Tulsa by $5.60 almost for a 12,000 and still 5. Well, being the engineer that I am, I'm kind of thinking, well, what's the break even? When do we break even? 24,430 gallons for, Tom Cook can water his yard, you can go ahead and tell him that, 24,000 gallons and just over 400. Then we basically break even on the bill of about 166. So taking all that in consideration, and staff and meeting with Mr. Spurgeon, we believe that this manual of fees and the program that's implemented provides us the best opportunity to implement the capital improvements. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or Mr. Spurgeon can answer.
Any questions of Kenny or Mr. Spurgeon? Okay. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
I did have, on that--
Yes, sir.
On the, our contribution, the Hakey Creek plant--
Yes.
Is there a similar contribution coming from a partner in that particular--
Yes, it is. Quickly, our contribution is about $49 million at the plant, and Tulsa's is the same. Yes, sir.
I might comment, too, is that we've had several meetings on this. I mean, this is kind of a review--
Yes, sir.
--for us. We have several public meetings on this, so if the publics want to, while there are not any questions, I'll show you there were a lot of questions asked at earlier public meetings that we had, so appreciate it.
Questions and redirection. Yes, sir. Thank you.
We have one person that'd like to sign up and speak, Rachel Siewski.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Rachel Swakoski. I live at 501 South 27th Street. I've been a Broken Arrow citizen since 1970. I've seen most of you around. I don't think I know-- See most of you around. I think these are great ideas, and I know that our city is growing and that we need to progress. I heard this on the news last night. I had no intention of being here, but I heard this on the news last night, and I have been hearing that there were going to be rate increases in our water, in our water bill. But last night on the news, it brought out the point that it was going to be a rate increase for five years each year. I was very concerned about that because I do have friends who are elderly, who are on a very limited income, and if their water bill is increased $5 a month for five years, that's 30 more dollars. They're going to still have to choose between food, prescriptions. Do they pay their water bill this month? If they don't pay it this month, the city gives them a fee, an added fee that they're going to have to pay, which makes it harder to pay the next month, and they're trying to choose between food, utility bills, prescriptions. If a friend of mine on a very limited income, his water bill is $58, 30 more dollars in five years, $90. Where does he get that money? He doesn't get a cost of living increase. He does, he's not married, doesn't have two salaries. What do these people do? So that is my question. While I see all the wonderful things that you're doing for the city and with the city and bringing in businesses and everything, there are little people down at the bottom who are hurting. This will hurt them even more. While I know we don't want to be a Flint, Michigan, while I know we need to upkeep these and fix them before they get bad, what does that person do? That's my question. It was increased last year with the ambulance service, okay, or whenever. We're going to be passing more bonds. That's going to be taxes on whatever they buy. So does anyone have an answer for me? What does this person do? No one?
I, since you--
Thank you for listening.
Sure, since you posed a question, I will do my best to answer it in my own way. This is the perennial problem that I think every governmental entity has to struggle with, is how to provide the services we are obligated to provide and our citizens require us to provide while trying to do it as the least amount of expense possible. That's everything, anytime. I live at 501 South 27th Street. I've been a Broken Arrow citizen since 1970. I've seen most of you around. I don't think I know, seen most of you around. I think these are great ideas, and I know that our city is growing and that we need to progress. I heard this on the news last night, I had no intention of being here, but I heard this on the news last night, and I have been hearing that there were going to be rate increases in our water, in our water bill. But last night on the news, it brought out the point that it was going to be a rate increase for five years each year. I was very concerned about that, because I do have friends who are elderly, who are on a very limited income, and if their water bill is increased $5 a month for five years, that's 30 more dollars. They're going to still have to choose between food, prescriptions. Do they pay their water bill this month? If they don't pay it this month, the city gives them a fee, an added fee that they're going to have to pay, which makes it harder to pay the next month. And they're trying to choose between food, utility bills, prescriptions. If a friend of mine on a very limited income, his water bill is $58, 30 more dollars in five years, $90. Where does he get that money? He doesn't get a cost of living increase. He does, he's not married, doesn't have two salaries. What do these people do? So that is my question. While I see all the wonderful things that you're doing for the city and with the city and bringing in businesses and everything, there are little people down at the bottom who are hurting. This will hurt them even more. While I know we don't want to be a Flint, Michigan, while I know we need to upkeep these and fix them before they get bad, what does that person do? That's my question. It was increased last year with the ambulance service, okay, or whenever. We're going to be passing more bonds, that's going to be taxes on whatever they buy. So, does anyone have an answer for me? What does this person do? No one?
I, since you-
Thank you for listening.
Sure, since you posed a question, I will do my best to answer it in my own way. This is the perennial problem that I think every governmental entity has to struggle with, is how to provide the services we are obligated to provide and our citizens require us to provide while trying to do it as the least amount of expense possible. That's everything, anytime. So your question, I think, is fairly asked, what do the people who don't have, who this hurts? I don't know that I have a good answer, and I'm just being as blatantly honest with you as I can. What I'm understanding is, some of these, if not all of these, are not improvements that are luxuries, they're things that have to be done or we start running afoul of DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, things that end up costing more money because we have to pay fines and things. So, I believe any question asked deserves a fair answer, and the answer is, I don't have a good answer for what we do. Mine'll go up too. I have to live here and enjoy the same rate increases as everyone else.
You're not making $15,000 a year.
And I understand that. The problem is, the problem is, if we are able and going to continue to provide the services that we are obligated to provide as your city, we have to, and in order to avoid running afoul of all these other entities who want to tell us how to run our city, then we are faced with a very difficult decision. It's not one any of us are really relishing. So, I think that, if nothing else, I'm just trying to give you a sense of what we're struggling with, is looking at what we have to do and how do we do it with the least amount of burden, and I think, you know, that's what we're struggling with right now. It's a fair question, but I, it's, we have the competing urges.
It's not only the elderly that are affected, it's the single mother who have children and are trying to meet their budget too. That's huge. $30 a month for a single mother and three children is huge.
I agree, I was raised by a single mother. So, so, I do, but we still have to get water to that single mother, and we still have to get water to the elderly. So how do we do that if we can't keep up with the infrastructure needs? It's a fair question, I don't, but that's the answer, is we have to balance, how do we keep providing the single mother and the elderly with the water and sewer services they require?
It's not without compassion that we make these decisions.
If she can't afford it, then you're not providing it for her.
Understand, but it's not without compassion that we don't, that we make these decisions, but we make them for 108,000 people, and it's hard to pick and choose those people that we understand have difficulties, but we can't single them out. Hopefully, we live in a community where neighbors or organizations look after those people that are in need. This city cannot do that, ma'am. Understand, understand your question.
I'm bringing it to your attention. I want, I mean, thank you for answering, Mr. Udi, thank you so much, but what, what do we do? I mean, I'm, 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 well, I guess I'm shocked that it's going to go up $30. I mean, I can understand $5 a month, but then it, times five, that's $30 a month. So that's, that's the huge part right there for me to bring to your consideration about these citizens who are not as lucky as some of us.
Thank you. Any more questions, discussion?
Well, I've received several calls on this today, interestingly enough, and I think the question posed is a fair one, and I come back, if my understanding is correct, failing to implement these capital improvements would be, could lead to some serious difficulties in a very short period of time, is that correct?
That's correct, Councilman. I mean, if you think back, because of the collapse, you've got a perfect example. We had a sewer trunk, a main, collapse last spring, and it cost us approximately $175,000 to fix. The line that Mr. Swab talked about has been around, some portion of it since 1968. And we, as a result, we not only had to pay the approximately $175,000, we also had an approximately $10,000 to $12,000 fine that we received because we put sewer in ditches. And that is the same line that is existing today, that has the potential to collapse tomorrow, with if we get any type of sufficient rain, any movement in the ground. And in order to do that, you know, the DEQ is aware, we had to report, I mean, we self-reported. That's not the first time that lines collapsed. That line has actually collapsed since I've been here for 15 months, it collapsed in two, at least two other places. And then you look at our, you look at our lift stations, and the, and the fine that we received for the lift station last, last fall. Basically, the council has deliberated with this and have tried to keep the rates as low as possible in the, which is awesome. The problem on the backside is, is that the cost to replace these infrastructure or this reinvestment are not, are not cheap. I mean, they've replaced the county trunk sewer line, gives approximately $20 million. And what could happen, if in fact there's another collapse and we don't have a plan in place, I believe that we will get a consent order from the Department of Environmental Quality that will mandate that we do it, and then they will fine us into submission if in fact we don't do it. And so, with these improvements, and I tried to make that point in my statement, is these are improvements that we need to maintain and to upgrade our systems to meet the demands that the, the customers we currently have with our current customers. And also, to make sure that we have the capacity, capacity being defined that, that, I mean, we have over 4,000 homes approximately that have been approved, we have new businesses, and if in fact we cannot meet those demands, then what happens is, is that we, we weren't able to meet those demands, then our community won't grow, and then the burden becomes greater because we have the same number of customers. Now, with the economic development initiatives and activities, our goal is to try to bring new businesses, more customers, and if in fact that happens, property values go up, more customers are available, they will absorb some of this cost, because that's what's happened over the last 10 years with the growth that we've seen. So I, it's a great question, but looking at this on a, just a straight SWOT analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, not fixing our utilities is the, is one of the two or three biggest threats facing this community today. $140 million today, if we do nothing, easily could be $200 million five, six, seven years from now. And then you want to talk about stewardship, and talking about responsibility to the taxpayers by not dealing with it when you know you need to deal with it? And I don't think anybody on this council or myself want to be in a position to where we get, we get told by the DEQ, you're going to get a consent order. Because that means you're a community that's not in compliance. And I, none of you nor I want to be the ones that have to take that, have to have that responsibility on our backs, because it means we're not leading. And that's what I believe we need to do here, as difficult the decision this is, we have a responsibility to provide the stewardship to this community for the 110,000, as Council Member Lester said, at the same time, to make sure that the rates we're charging are only what we really need. And the reason that we need the five-year model is because as we go out and we borrow the money for the improvements, we have to pledge an asset to be able to borrow the money, and we do that through the rates. And so by only doing one or two year at a time, we're still going to have that debt service incurred, and so we're going to have to demonstrate that we're going to have the ability to pay. Otherwise, we're going to find it very difficult to be able to get the money to make these improvements. It's just a vicious cycle if we don't deal with this, respectfully.
Well, I think also too, that if the, if we get fined and we have to make emergency repairs, we end up having to pass that on to the rate payers and increase the rates also. And, and one thing I'll have to say about our city is, we're so efficient, there's a reason why our rates are lower than other communities, almost every community in the area. If you move to any community outside Broken Arrow, you're going to have to pay more money. And City of Tulsa's rating their rates for the next five years also, along with the other communities around us. So, one thing that we've done is, is we are a lot more efficient, and our rates are some of the lowest in the metro area. So if you go anywhere else, you're, no matter where you live, you're faced with the same, same dilemma of the rate increases. But also, when you move outside our area, the rates are even a lot higher than what we are paying here. So we do have low utility rates here, and, but those, those costs end up getting passed on to the, on to the consumer. If we're fined by DEQ or EPA, we have to pay those, and then we still have to come up with the money to make the repairs, so.
And it's very similar to the report we had earlier on our roads. It's just part of maintaining our city, it's our responsibility to see that everything is as good a work order as we can keep it. The rate increases affect me, affect the property, the office building I own, it affects everybody. So the decisions we make have an impact on us as well.
Your points well taken, Councilman. That road report that we did is one of the most valuable tools we have outside of the budget, because it demonstrates that we have a half a billion dollar investment. And if you think about that, most of that investment was, was built by someone else and then was given to the city. And we accepted responsibility for it, so we have to maintain it. And if in fact we don't, then the room would be full with people wanting to know what we're going to do about fixing the roads.
And that's part of the problem, I think, we see today with our water and sewer, is we haven't done that over the years. But we've done fairly well with our roads, and I think we just have to do that with our water and sewer.
And the reason why we haven't invested as much in water and sewer is because we've been trying to hold the rates down.
No, I, I, I agree, and the other thing about emergency repairs is emergency repairs almost always end up being more expensive than if they had just been done.
Several times more expensive, yes.
And the problem is, the city's reserves that we have, and one of the goals is to create a reserve to handle 90 to, at least 90 days, is that when you go and you take a couple hundred thousand dollars out of your reserve in order to pay for that repair, that has to come from somewhere. We didn't budget that, and, but it still has to be taken care of. And so, part of this is making sure that we have adequate reserves to be able to meet our obligations should something unforeseen happen. Because I can promise you, is that until we fix some of these facilities, we are going to have additional, additional repairs that are going to have to be made, because as Mr. Swab mentioned, we can't get to physically, we don't have the capacity to be able to complete all these improvements in a couple of years. That's why it's going to take five to seven years. And so the sooner we get started, the sooner we're going to be able to complete these improvements and hopefully avoid any problems with our regulatory agencies or any major repairs that we've seen over the last, at least twice since I've been here in 15 months, and I know that you all faced ones previous to that as well.
Absolutely. Well, I'm, I'm one of those retired people with fixed income, and I understand why we have to do it. I don't, I don't like to see my rates go up either, but it's, it's far better to keep the facilities in the proper condition and avoid very expensive catastrophes down the road, when not only would we be paying more, we'd be without service for an extended period of time. So, you know, there's, there's so many reasons to go ahead, and I'm glad we're doing this planning ahead. It's, it's one of the smartest things I think the city has done in years, and among other, many other smart things though. But the roads and the water and the sewer, they all have to be taken care of, and they have to be kept up, and we're trying to do it as inexpensively as we can, but to do it right. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 958 and authorize its execution.
Second? Question, second, discussion, roll call, please.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Darman?